Yeah, if there's something that you send me an email to that address that I need to look at, you better call me.
Well, not yet.
So there's another one, a different one too. A different style chair over there. We're good.
Call this meeting to order. The first on the agenda is the swearing in of our new planning commission members, Jeff Matson and David Rand.
What I'm going to do is have you both just stand where you're at.
A point of order here, should we not amend the agenda to do this because it is not on the agenda?
Yes, we should.
I move we amend the agenda to allow for the swearing in of new commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Mary Nun, Jamie, can you proceed?
I can. Thank you. We do have two new planning commission members onboard with us. We have David Rand, a planning commission member appointed by the mayor, and we have Jeff Matson, another member of the planning commission. So we'll go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Go ahead and just insert your name in the spot. I won't read both of you, but unless you want to do it, we can do them both at the same time.
Yeah.
It will work. So I state your name.
Aye, David Rand.
Aye, Jeff Matson.
Being first duly sworn upon oath, dispose and say.
Being first duly sworn upon oath, dispose and say.
Being first duly sworn upon oath, dispose and say.
That I will well and truly perform the duties of office as a member of the planning commission of the city of Sunnyside.
That I will truly perform.
Well and truly perform the duties of office as a member of the planning commission of the city of Sunnyside, Washington.
That I will truly perform the duties of office as a member of the planning commission of the city of Sunnyside, Washington.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will observe and uphold the ordinances of the city of Sunnyside.
And that I will observe and uphold the ordinances of the city of Sunnyside.
And that I will observe and uphold the ordinance of the city of Sunnyside.
And the statutes and constitution of the state of Washington.
And the statute and constitution of the state of Washington.
And the statutes and constitution of the state of Washington.
And the constitution of the United States during my tenure in office as such planning commissioner.
And the statute and the constitution of Washington state and the constitution of the United States during my tenure in the office as such planning commissioner.
And the constitution of the United States during my tenure in office as such planning commissioner.
Welcome aboard. You're officially.
Come in, we're getting those signed.
Thank you.
You can sign yours and give me a copy before you leave here tonight. After I get a coffee, you'll have one to keep.
The commissioners, welcome. Commissioner Jeff Matson and Commissioner David Rand. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the roll call. Jamie, can you proceed please?
Commissioner Campos.
Here.
Commissioner Farmer.
Here.
Commissioner, our chairperson, Hohalter.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Rand.
Here.
And Commissioner Matson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, all members present.
Next item is the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? And is there any changes or amendments? Do I have approval for the minutes of April 10th, 2018?
So moved.
I second. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Moore, second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, minutes are approved. The next item is a public hearing. This is a consideration recommendation of the council to study recreational marijuana, whether or not to allow the sales and production. This public hearing is being held to discuss and receive public testimony on the planning commission's consideration. The appearance of fairness disclosures. The concern is that this hearing be fair in form and substance, as well as appearance. Commissioners, do any of you have a financial interest in this issue? No?
No.
No.
I do.
Okay, state your name.
David Rand.
Okay, David. Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing?
No.
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 Yes.
If your answer is yes, then I need you to, which you did, speak now. So the record shows that David Rand, new commissioner, does have a benefit of the result of this outcome. We'll proceed. Commissioners, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? Yes?
Yes.
If no, speak now.
I'd like to recuse myself from this discussion, please.
Thank you, David Rand, we appreciate that. Audience members, is there anyone in the audience who objects to my participation or any other commissioner's participation in these proceedings? If you object, approach the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and your objection. Hearing no one from the audience came forward, the hearing procedure will now take place at 6:37. The hearing is now open. Staff of each side, please provide the report for us, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What we are doing is basically having a public meeting, a public hearing to gather public comment. The council had directed the item about the studying, the marijuana situation of whether we would like to stay the status quo of continuing the prohibition of it, or if we would like to get some more comments for, opposed, and get some direction to give back, direction back to council, whether to move forward with going in another direction to possibly adopt an ordinance to allow it, allow it with conditions, certain areas. So what I did at the last meeting, we brought it up, and I provided the ordinances from other surrounding cities that do allow it. We did Prosser, I can't remember all of them, Union Gap. I did four of them, I did Renton and another city. And then I also provided the original ordinance that got drafted in draft form for the city of Sunnyside and then kind of tabled years ago when 502 was first passed. So I included that in the packet as well. So those are all items that are up for discussion and the fact finding session or information finding, maybe not fact finding, but information finding. And then we would move forward to decide if which direction we would, we are a recommending body to the council, we're not the decision making body to the council. So we would take, open it up for public comment, have any debate or questions amongst the commission, and then we can decide what to do with it and which direction to go to move forward one way or another with it. So, but that was the directive of council to revisit it and bring it back in front of the planning commission to get a recommendation one way or another back to them with this item. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
So at this time, do we have an applicant?
There is no applicant because we don't, it's not, it was actually remanded to us from the council. So it wasn't brought forward by any individual, specifically council as a whole. It was brought up at council and then voted, I think four to three, to remand this, bring this item in front of the planning commission to get direction from our side, from the commission back to council, one way or another. So there's not really an applicant, it would just be more, and it's hard to say it's a public hearing, it is a public forum more so to get anybody's public input towards it, and then a discussion, and then a recommendation forward. So that's kind of how we're going to approach it.
So is there any person in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Please approach the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and offer your testimony.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Rand, I'm a resident of Sunnyside. I'm a local 4-H leader, and there is a state licensed 502 business that has volunteered their financial support to my club to do tremendous things. The owner of that license is David Rand. He also owns Best Belt Construction. And in just the recent month, I have witnessed a complete unselfless act of kindness towards our youth that brought literally grown men to tears last couple of weeks. Best Belt Construction has now donated their services and all equipment, all product to add on to the top finish livestock sale, excuse me, the Central Washington Junior Livestock Show Barns. It's going to be an extensive, extensive project that's going to allow the expansion of the pig barn. This last year, we were pretty much maxed out. They are talking about having to turn kids away next year due to lack of space. And due to his contribution, by next year, they won't have to turn any kids away, will still be able to take two pigs per animal, or two pigs per kid. His company has also stepped up for the Grandview Fairgrounds and has provided all the labor to replace all the walls on the steer barn. I have my personal opinions about marijuana. I have seen a lot of people that have benefited greatly from the medical use of things. And on this side of the mountains, we have been somewhat cut off. We have to travel to Spokane or Seattle to get any sort of medication for those patients that really do need it. I personally feel that this man is definitely the right person to have in that spot. His profits definitely do help the youth of our community. I just think it's the right thing to do for our community. We talk about the youth, but going out to our parks, I found 20 safety issues playing with my kids out at the park, South Hill Park, the other day. We need to do something to bring some tax dollars in that we can put something into our youth. And that's a big concern for me, that we have to leave town to do a lot of this stuff that's safe for our kids.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Commissioners, do you have any questions of the person who gave testimony? If you do, ask the chair if you have any questions of them, only the chair can have direct testimony. Okay. Planning commissioners, among the commissioners, we are open for debate, but I feel we need to proceed with this information that you've provided. Do we need to do that after I close the public hearing?
It's part of the record, so you can proceed now, you can close the public hearing. It's, there's, either way is acceptable.
At this time, I am going to close the public hearing. It is 6:45. So with the information that's been provided, we need to openly address that. Jamie, do you want to proceed with the information?
Sure, I can, basically, this language of this ordinance was drafted, like I said, it's a little bit dated, but still pertinent and references the right RCWs and things of that nature. So it talks about if this, if the council, or the council, if the commission sees fit to recommend moving forward with it and sending something forward, this is an option, it could be amended. The highlights, it gives definitions, which are pretty straight out of the RCW. It talks about what marijuana production is, processing is, sales is, and kind of defines each one of those. One of the keys is the location criteria. It's very similar to the, what was drafted for the adult entertainment ordinance, uses kind of those same buffers. Talks about not within 1,000 feet of an elementary school, secondary school, playgrounds, recreation center or facility, childcare center, public park, public transit center, library, any game arcade, where admission is not restricted to persons 21 or older, a church, or any properties owned R1 to, basically the residential zones, the city. So basically, what, on the very back of that document that I had sent out, there was a map also that kind of showed, showed those buffers. And that, I see, yeah, it has one there. It was in the, it was in the packet of materials that I gave out at the last meeting. I'm not sure. I can get more of them too, if they're not in there. But in those pinned up ones, it should have been stuck to the very back of.
Can you show it or not, Jamie?
I don't know if this got scanned in or not.
Can you just briefly describe?
I can kind of describe it. There's a blue buffer on here that eliminates 90% of the parcels in town where this could occur. If this ordinance language was adopted as drafted, it leaves about, I don't know, seven or 10 parcels as options for it. More particularly, the thing to note on this is it does talk about not within 1,000 feet of any of these things, but it also, because it's municipal code language, it only picks up those properties that are inside of the city. So it recognizes if there's something in the county that specifically, and I could weed this out, there is a church that's within 1,000 feet of certain parcels, but it's in the county, so it doesn't, it's kind of like our airport overlay. It doesn't, the jurisdiction's not there to do that, so it's somewhat ignored. So that's why there's parcels that are available, that someone could say, well, it's within 1,000 feet. Well, within 1,000 feet of that use inside your jurisdiction, so.
Is that a requirement that we can only say within 1,000 feet inside our jurisdiction instead of just period within 1,000 feet?
There are, there is language within the RCW for the state licensing requirements, but churches and residential property are not listed in that language. So those have been added to the municipal code section, but there's nothing saying that a magical number of 1,000 for the municipal, we just followed the state guidelines on that. But I think a note to add to clarify this would be that statement that I just made was within the jurisdiction. Otherwise, you're going to get an argument to some of those uses that are there.
Is there, is there any statute or case law that says that if we were to adopt 1,000-foot limitation, we could not apply that to all properties? We can only apply it within the city limits?
We only have jurisdiction within the city, so I don't know of any case law that would...
We have jurisdiction over the parcel that would be applied.
We do.
We have jurisdiction over them.
Yes.
So what legally stops us from saying there's a church within 1,000 feet of this parcel, you can't use this parcel?
It would, it would be a, the only issue comes up is that those have to be sought out and found and known, rather than our data, we don't collect that data, so it's a, it's a...
Right. So if we got an application, somebody would have to take a little bit of time.
Physical measurements and, yeah.
Go out and look at the area and determine whether there's anything.
We would, we just took the approach, and this, and that can be, this is all up for discussion and that can be applied. We took the same approach as our, as like I said, our airport overlay. It goes out there, but we don't have jurisdiction to enforce any of that outside of the city limits, so.
That's why we had the county adopt the airport overlay too.
True.
But, you know, I don't know if we're going to go forward with this or not, but if we do, my opinion is if we get an application, somebody needs to go out and take the time to find out whether there's a conflicting use within 1,000 feet, whether that's in the city or not, even though our GIS mapping system won't do that automatically.
Sure.
Is the church that we're talking about in question, is that in our urban growth area?
I believe so.
Do we not have some kind of a control over urban growth area?
We, we don't have any control over it.
We have input, maybe, maybe input would be a better, a better term then.
We do. We are notified on applications that take place within the urban growth area by Yakima County for comment, as a commenting agency, but we have no jurisdiction within the, the only thing that we have is, properties have to be within that growth area to legally be considered for annexation with us, so. So those are kind of the high points of, it's a very short ordinance, not a whole lot of language to get misconstrued or anything, so it was shortened to the point when it was drafted, and that's kind of, it was shelved a few years ago when it was drafted and not moved on, so. But the top eight would be state criteria, and then the two were added down below that, from my understanding, it's been a while since I looked at that.
On the next to last page, it talks about indemnification. Do we have a legal opinion as to whether or not an applicant or a committee can actually waive their legal rights?
I could get one, I'm not aware. I wouldn't be able to answer that 100% for you this evening. I don't know that answer. I don't want to claim to make up an answer that isn't, that I don't know.
Right. That would be a question I would have, because in obtaining a license, people will agree to a lot of things. If something goes sour down the road, can they really legally have waived their rights prior? Would be my question.
Is that something that we would need to address to the city attorney?
Yeah, that's who it would be addressed to, and if, if this were, if we as a commission said, yeah, we like pretty much what you have written here, and we'd recommend forwarding this, it would go to legal counsel for review prior to going to the commission for, or to the council for adoption.
The last section on the last page where it talks about the ordinance shall not be deemed to conflict with federal law, et cetera, et cetera, it seems on the surface to me that it might. The oath that was sworn to tonight. Right. Specifically addresses that.
This was legal jargon that was...
Again, I think that's something the city attorney would have to respond to, but just on the surface, not being a legal mind, it strikes me as though there could be a conflict there.
Jamie, has any of this been addressed by the city council on the legal issue?
No, they haven't seen this, so, like I said, this move forward language was drafted and proposed, and then it was just talked about that it would, they were just going to put it moratorium and then prohibit it, and that's where it sat, and then it's been brought back up by council to kind of revisit it and decide which way to go, so. No, that's why whatever we come up with would go before legal counsel and council prior to any type of adoption.
I would like to move away from the proposed ordinance that we're here, regulations that we have here, and have a couple of comments. We're not here to determine whether Mr. Rand should open a store. I appreciate Mr. Rand's involvement in the city. He needs to be commended for it. He needs to be commended for his volunteering to serve on this particular commission. But we are here to determine whether we will open up the city to a retail marijuana store, possibly production, and possibly processing. That's what we're here for. I think that in looking at neighboring communities, Prosser allows it, Prosser's put the brakes on. They said, whoa, this is not maybe what we wanted. So they are relooking at this. Yakima County, in the news today, or a couple of days ago, they are increasing their funding to find and tell people they cannot be in the marijuana business in the unincorporated areas of the county. We have had two votes regarding marijuana. One was several years ago, when it was voted whether to legalize it or not legalize it. Yakima County, by a large margin, said we don't want to legalize it. It was legalized, so now it's legal. But then they had an advisory vote just last year, and Yakima County said 59% to 41%, we don't want it. And I think if you, and I had the figures at one time for just the Sunnyside area, and I think it was something like 63% of the people in Sunnyside who care enough... like 63% of the people in Sunnyside who care enough about the city of Sunnyside to vote said, "We don't want it." The other thing that... The advertisement of the notice of public hearing, was it... It was advertised in the newspaper? Is that what it was?
It was, and then posted in the three public places.
Okay.
Police Station, City Hall, and Post Office.
And obviously, probably, the church, since they weren't within the city, was not specifically notified of this process tonight?
No, we just put it in the paper, and we didn't have... Wasn't site-specific, therefore it didn't have like a 300-foot notice requirement or who we would send that to, so...
Okay, so with those things in mind, I think the public has spoken. I don't think they want a marijuana... Any retail store, manufacturing, or processing business within the city of Sunnyside. I believe that we need to consider that very strongly of the citizen wishes for this community. I think that if for some reason we say no, and it goes back to the council, I would like to say no, but if the council decides that they wish to go forward with it, then I think it needs to come back, and I think we need to go over this list of stuff. I know when I drive by Prosser, I think there's lots of things that we need to address. I drive by Prosser and see the weed sign way up in there. Are we gonna have a weed sign when somebody drives into Sunnyside? I mean, we need to do a lot of things to prepare for the consequences, potential consequences of a marijuana production in the city of Sunnyside.
Jamie, this document was prepared four years ago, somewhere four or five years ago, something like that.
Roughly, yeah.
And there were undoubtedly public hearings held at that time?
There were, yes, there were. Like I said, it went before council, and that's where things happened.
But it went through the planning commission first?
I'd have to look back and say, "I know that..." I believe so, but I don't know that drafting the ordinance came through the planning commission, so this was in preparation for addressing that if it were, but I think... I believe it just happened at council. I don't know that the planning commission had seen that. There was a process.
A process where the public was invited to participate.
Yeah, it's been a topic several times.
But it's been several years.
Yes.
And I guess one of the things that I think would not be inappropriate when we have an issue that has been discussed before, and particularly if there were people who were very interested and provided testimony, that we take the time to... You know, it's above and beyond what's required, but I think it's not inappropriate to take the time to go back and see who was involved in that process from the public and let them know that we're gonna be taking comment again at some point in time. Not just on this issue, but on anything. Because I think, you know, I mean, I'm new on the commission, obviously, but when we have an opportunity to hear from the public, I actually want to hear from the public. I don't want to just do the minimum requirement. I actually want people to know that we're doing and feel welcome to come and participate in the process. But I don't... I kind of agree with Mr. Farmer's comments that I don't know that there's a lot of rationale in nitpicking the wording of this potential ordinance at this point until we get some feedback from the council that they do intend to do something, or if they do intend to do something and they want us then to kind of vet it out for them.
Unless I misunderstand the agenda item, I believe they're asking us for a consensus in whether or not it should be studied further. Am I misreading the agenda item?
That's... No, you're not. That's kind of what they're looking for. They're not looking for us to send them forward this ordinance tonight, even a revised, amended ordinance of this draft. They're wanting to know, have a public hearing and find out, should we spend time and visit this to allow it, or should we not spend time and keep going the status that we are? So they're looking for direction through a public process.
I read it... The way I read it and understand it, we either send them a decision that, "Let's move forward with it," or they're sending... Or we're sending a decision, "We should not move forward for it." That's what I read here.
That's how I read it myself.
Move forward with studying it.
No, no. Move forward with either recommending it or move forward without recommending it.
With a yes or a no. That's how I read it, but...
Well, it's got "study" right in the agenda item, so...
It says, "Study."
Consider recommendation of the council to study recreational marijuana... I can't even talk tonight. To study recreational marijuana, whether or not to allow the sales and production. So do they... They want direction... Do we want to spend time on studying it and allowing it? Or do they... Is the recommendation to, "We've done enough, and we're gonna stay status quo and prohibit it?" That's kind of what they're looking for.
That's why I read the agenda item.
But the word "study" on the agenda item is different than the paragraph in the minutes from the April meeting, which says, "The city council requested that the planning commission consider an ordinance addressing recreational marijuana."
Jamie, what did they ask, Jamie?
They want us to study it, and they are not looking for us to send forward an ordinance at this point.
Do they want us to study it, or do they want us to...
They want us...
Tell them whether we think we should take the time to study it or not?
Yes, that is what they want. They want to know, "Do we want to spend time on coming up with language to allow it, or do... Are we done with it at this point?" And they'll take it from there and decide what to do with it. They are the ultimate deciding body.
So they want to know whether the planning commission wants to reopen the process?
Yes. They would like to reopen it, but they wanted it sent to the planning commission for the vetting, to see what type of... What level of interest there is and what direction the commission would recommend going, so I don't know if that makes it any clearer or any muddier, so...
I think in keeping with what Commissioner Manson mentioned earlier, for reasons I don't know, I don't think we've got a representative group of people in the audience tonight to give us a good feel for what the city of Sunnyside is really wanting today as opposed to five years ago or 10 years ago.
So commissioners, do we have more discussion on what's been presented?
Is there any way to get any language that's more current, or this is it?
Well, it can be drafted. Obviously, more steps would need to be taken. It's just that, do we put the time in effort into it if we're not looking to move forward? Or would that time be better spent on something else? So I guess we just need to get a consensus which way and make that recommendation of the council, and then let them decide, "Okay, we task you with this specific task to come up with an ordinance to allow it and address X, Y, and Z," or we get a direction from the council, "We want you to draft an ordinance that prohibits it and addresses X, Y, and Z, and then bring that back to us," so... And that's kind of where we're at, and that's kind of where it's a weird situation. We're having a public hearing, but it's just to gather public input. It's not to decide on an ordinance, our specific ordinance language that's even ready to go one way or the other, so that's kind of where we're at.
I've spent a lot of time researching Washington State, the pros, the cons, everything from teenagers to toddlers getting into edibles, the financial end of it. I think we all have friends on both sides of the aisle on this issue. There's lots of headlines current as last week that Trump may be likely to support ending the federal ban on marijuana. I would hate for us to waste our time if that's going to be the case, although I think that if this is something we're going to spend time on, we should have some concessions, like Commissioner Mattson was talking about. I don't know what the next step would be if we just should vote to do a study.
You know, if Trump lifts the ban on marijuana, it's still the state, and the state has given the individual at this particular point in time, the state has still given each individual entity, town, city, county, the right to regulate marijuana sales in their own jurisdiction. Whether the feds say yes or no, the state still says, "We have the right to regulate marijuana in our own jurisdiction."
And the... My understanding of the federal controlled... Was it Controlled Substances Act, something like... But it actually would take congressional action to remove marijuana from the list that it's on. I mean, the president can propose that and support it, but it still takes congressional action and senate action, and at the pace that those guys work, some of us might still be alive. So, you know, I... And basically, what that would do, we'd... Like everything else, you know, federal government says, "We're not gonna regulate it anymore." States and localities can still do that, but I guess... Is there any interest on putting time and effort into studying this at this point?
I would think that if the city council, and they have the final jurisdiction on this, if the city council says, "We would like to move forward with marijuana sales in the city of Sunnyside," then task us with the responsibility to send forth an ordinance of some type to them. I don't think we should... I think we need to give them what we want, what we feel, and then leave it up to them to say, "Yea or nay, we believe this is what... The way we're gonna go." And if they disagree with us, that is totally... That is totally their right as city councils and representative of the citizens of this community. So then they need to come back and task us with the responsibility of defining what we want to see for marijuana sales, production, and whatever in the city of Sunnyside. I think that's the way it should go.
It actually seems like their question was a little bit undefined.
It... I think it was in some respects.
Well, and it's up to the city council for the final decision. So if we task them with making the decision, "Do you go ahead and proceed, or you don't," would leave us a better opportunity than to waste time, and then their end result is no.
Right.
So can we present that to them? Would we need a motion or more discussion with the planning commissioners?
I would move that we send the city council a reply that we, as a commission, do not wish to go forward with drafting a marijuana law unless they decide they want it done, and then we will. We feel that it's not within the best interests of the community.
Is that a motion, or do we hear a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I would second that. I agree with Commissioner Farmer.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Commissioner Farmer that we present this to the council to make the decision if they want us to proceed with the study. And it was seconded by the vice chair, Brett Moore. All those in favor say aye.
Point of order, just for clarification, because we're stuck on that study word again. I think clarifying the motion, the motion was to send council notice that we don't... That the commission not move forward on drafting a marijuana ordinance unless determined by council that they would like to move forward and have planning commission draft language to that.
Yeah, that's... You say it better.
Still kind of stuttering on that very end, but I just wanted to get that clarification because I didn't want to get hung up on that.
So we're asking in this motion to proceed with the city council to make the decision if the planning commission should proceed. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion has been made. Will this go to the city council at their next meeting? Or what are we looking at, Jamie?
I will get with the clerk and see what the... It'll... I gotta see how it goes on, how it fits into the agenda and on there, if it's an item from staff, or if it's a... What exact... I'll get it on to the agenda, but I get with the clerk, and then I can send out an email to the commission to let you know which meeting and where it fits in there and the motion that we'll be presenting to council.
I want to thank all of the commissioners that have proceeded in this at this time. This is a hard issue, and I appreciate everyone wanting to serve this well. The next item on the agenda is public comments. So is there anyone from the public on the matters of jurisdiction with the planning commission that's not on the current agenda that would like to come forward? Hearing none, any additional items from staff?
I don't have any additional items right now. There's no pending application... Well, there's pending applications, but nothing at a point that's submitted far enough along that is coming up on the... To be hitting the next docket for the next meeting, so I don't have anything additional at this time.
So commissioners, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, July 10th. Does that look good for everyone at this time, or can anyone come forward if they need not to be at the meeting?
I will be out of town that week.
Okay. Commissioner Mattson will not be available. If anyone finds that they're not able to attend a... If anyone finds that they're not able to attend a meeting, please notify myself and Jamie Aileen with the city. We have to make sure that we do have a, a quorum. And then, commissioners, any members have any comments, or anything that you want to discuss this evening?
I would, again, like to apologize to my seatmates on the, uh, whatever that email was.
[laughing]
That left, that left my computer that I didn't send. Uh, I don't know how it happened, but.
Just to clarify that a little bit, I don't know, Roy, did you receive something in your calendar or in an email?
I received my email and I looked at it, I'm like, uh, I don't know what this is.
Okay, so what we've received, for everyone's notice, is something that we're not sure exactly where it came from, but it did not come from Commissioner Farmer. Please do not open it. Do not accept a-
He's deleted.
Except maybe or decline, just do not open it. Um, I've addressed this with an IT person, and let's, let's see where it's come from. I have one, has the SEPA been addressed with the Catholic charities?
No, they haven't submitted that yet.
Okay. What do you think the holdup is?
Uh, I think the gal that was in charge of that had her baby, so she's on maternity leave, so the lap that it fell into to complete it, wasn't sure how to complete it, and hasn't submitted that yet.
Okay.
I shouldn't say, "I think," I know.
I wanted to ask, has the, uh, city clerk, uh, been replaced?
Yes.
And who is that?
Jaclyn Renteria is the city clerk.
Do we have an email address for her with the city?
Uh, yeah. I can get it. It's J. Renteria.
Can you spell that, please?
No. It's J., and then R.E.N.T.E.R.I.A. at sunnyside-wa.gov.
Okay. Do you know if the city has any applicants for city manager?
I'm not sure where they're at in that process. I know the city manager had submitted his resignation. It'll be effective July 1st, and, um, there will be a search and a process gone through to recruit and retain a new city manager as a replacement.
Do you have, uh, anything for the agenda for the next meeting that we're not aware of yet?
As of right now, no, but I'm sure we can come up with some items.
Is there anything from the state that we need to address at this time?
Uh, not at this time, no. Um, just fitting everything in with the huge boom of building projects that we had in for review and things, so, um, fitting in comp plan amendments and, uh, trying to get the census information completed too, that signed on to and agreed and said it could get done, and have a hard time saying no to anything, so, um, so we're working on that as well, so.
When we're looking at the urban growth area, the last time that we addressed this to the county, they had us remove 248 acres. Are we going to be addressing that again this year?
No, we can only do that through their plan every five to seven years, so.
Okay.
The only time to amend it is an emergency amendment, and you have to meet some criteria to do that if you're doing it outside of that five to seven year cycle that they set up. But, there is a bright note to that. It will be addressed with the state because in the end of the month here, I'm going to a, I can't even pronounce it, Ruckel Schuss meeting to discuss the benefits and the downside of the, um, Growth Management Act, and what it's, where its high points are, where its low points are, where it needs addressing, and those items will be brought up at that meeting, so.
Okay. The, um, last couple of months, we had an application for a towing facility, an event.
Yes.
Has that progressed?
Um, I've kind of been waiting. I did get some recommended conditions from the property owners in the neighborhood. I have not finished that application that sends it forward to the boundary review board. We told them it'd be a couple of months before we got through that application and gave those property owners opportunity to, um, come up with suggested conditions, and that I would be bringing those conditions back to this commission before sending that forward. So, it hasn't been sent forward, um, and hasn't been pushed or requested push by the applicant owner of that property at this point either.
Okay.
I think he's got his hands full with his property in Tri-Cities.
I understand there's a new event center that's going in, located on Sixth Street.
There is.
Can I ask, um, why didn't it come before the planning commission?
Because in the zoning ordinance, it fits as a permitted use, so it wouldn't, that wouldn't come before the planning commission.
Can I ask how, how large, what was the, uh?
I can get you the specifics. It's, it's-
I was just questioning.
It's splitting it into two, it's the old Dosh towing, elite towing building, that white, I don't know what it was before that. It's the white one, they're right bef, okay? Right before the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's kind of a long skinny building, and they're actually putting a fire separation wall to con-
Yeah.
-break it into two spaces, so it'll be technically two event centers. It wouldn't be two, it wouldn't be one.
Giant one.
It was too large, and they're putting fire sprinkler system. They just got done putting the fire sprinklers in that, so, because it fell into an A occupancy, which triggered that requirement. So, and then there's, you can see it formed up right now. They're working on, uh, getting ADA accessibility. They're going to be putting a ramp, a handicap ramp on that east side of the building and another entrance on the other end, so, fair amount of construction that still needs to take place. They're a ways off from occupancy of it, but that's what, that, that's why, um, it fit within, without having to come for any type of special variances or, or anything.
Where are they going to allow parking? Is there parking in the back?
There is, and he, that lot goes all the way over to Warehouse Avenue. It kind of makes a big L shape back in there. So, they've got a site plan and proposed paving. They're going to put curb gutter sidewalk in along Warehouse Avenue there, and-
Okay.
As part of it, it was a requirement.
Is there any other new building permits within the city?
We have several. We've, obviously, they got the mushroom farm down there on Midvale.
Anything that we'll be seeing?
Uh, not, not that's triggering need to come through the commission. Um, just lots of building starts, like Crop Production Services down there. We've got Popeyes Chicken Restaurant on the highway. Um-
Popeyes?
Yeah. There is, Astria just went into the, where Worksource was out at the mall. Their corporate offices did that. Um-
Basically, there's a tractor supply going in.
Tractor Supplies going where Dell's was-
Over where Dell's was.
In the old Kmart building. Um, that's going to get kind of all switched up. There's another national chain retailer that I can't release going into the other end of that Kmart building. Um-
They put the sign up today, so.
Grocery outlet.
Oh, they did? Okay, okay. Grocery outlets going in the other side.
They let it out.
Um, there's one more business possibly going in the middle, um, and then, uh, the I Center going in out on the Port property, um, by Swafford Home and Clinic. Um, those are kind of the highlights that I can think of. I'm sure there's something else that I'm missing that we were sorting through, but those are the main ones.
Commissioners, do you have any other comments? Have the new commissioners received their, uh, planning commission workbooks?
They did. I gave them those tonight, so.
Is there anything else that, uh?
I had to make new ones because I never get any of them back when they change out, so. I put my daughter to work.
Seeing there's nothing else with this meeting at this time, I will adjourn it. Thank you, commissioners.